We'll call the March seventh planning commission meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are ready to call the roll.
Alan?
Here.
Bib?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Greg?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Richard?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
All are present in the forum.
All right, this is the time we usually ask for the approval of minutes from the January fourth meeting, but we have already given approval for those so that the Parks Department could put in for a grant. So they stand approved as back then. One point four is the public comment period. Kimberly, is there anybody registered to speak on in that?
No, sir.
Okay. If there's nobody registered, we will call that closed. Two point oh is a public hearing. This is subdivision regulation amendments appendix A and B. This is the portion where the, not this board, but the the public gets to comment and we get to listen. Is there anybody that wants to speak for the subdivision regulations and appendix A and B? I see no hands. Are there anybody against, opposed? All right, I see no hands on that either. So we will call the public hearing closed. Under new business tonight, three point one is the subdivision regulation amendments appendix A and B. Is there a motion to put that on the floor for discussion?
So moved, second.
We got, Bob has a second. Okay. Kimberly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and this is for the subdivision regulation amendment appendix A and B. The request is for a roadway pavement to increase the local street compact base course of a minimum of six inches to eight inches thick. The collector's street roads from eight inches to ten inches thick. This is due to the more slab-on-slab construction in the roadwork needing a thicker base to withstand the weight of the construction trucks that are going over it. And I have put some pictures on here so you can kind of give an idea of why we're asking for this. This is a base layer and there's a base failure on this. On the closer end of it, you'll see what they call, this is Clayton's terms, alligator cracking. And that is the integrity of the base. So by putting a thicker base on there, when they put the final coat on there, it'll withhold it. So. And now I have Clayton, more with Public Works and David Brewer here with Engineering, if you have any further questions on that.
Okay, has anybody got questions for Clayton or David? In increasing that, we're just talking about the base. I tell you what, Dave or Clayton, either one. We're not talking about the thickening, the asphalt, just the base underneath.
Just the base stone, yes, sir. So we're gonna go from a six-inch base stone to an eight-inch base stone. And that'll give the road more bearing capacity. As Kimberly alluded to with the slab-on-grave construction, there are more cement trucks that are getting on those roads with just a binder course. And that'll give us availability to strengthen that road. And this is the binder course itself. So there's a finish layer that normally goes on, that surfacing, but we never got to that point because we had the failures previous to that. So they actually had to take out a substantial amount of binder course and stone. And in some cases, they had to undercut, Clayton said sixteen inches, to get to a dry, compacted material. So the eight inch will prevent this, let me rephrase that, we hope that the eight inch will prevent that from happening. Because the slab-on-grave construction is a less expensive construction technique and we're seeing more and more builders use that for home construction, so.
And that's eight inches compacted, right?
Eight-inch compacted stone, yes, sir.
Is all this just from the trucks itself or is some of it weather-related?
It's basic, no, it's from the bearing, the bearing weight of the trucks onto the surface. And so it is from the cement trucks, the full cement trucks that that travel down these roads.
And that's the streets we'll be maintaining later on.
Correct. And we don't, you know, maybe if they had the final course on, it would've held it together a little bit better, but we're, we don't know because most cases, they don't put that final course on until they're ready to give us that road.
Okay, any other questions? Tony?
Is this the first time trying this anywhere?
No, sir. I feel very confident in saying I can't give you an exact, an exact answer or city, but there are many places within the state of Tennessee that have eight inches of base stone.
The state does use thicker cores, speaking of, it's even thicker, much thicker than this. But a number of cities in the local area have made this very move that we're talking about. Franklin, Tennessee is one of them. I think Gallatin has done it. And there may be some other cities, but those are the two cities I'm aware that have already made this move.
So working out for them?
Yeah, so far I haven't heard anything negative on it and they haven't had to do, like, this particular one, as you can see, is in pretty bad shape. It was somewhere between twenty-five and thirty percent of the roads had to be removed and replaced. And luckily, we were able to see that, obviously, the problem was getting themselves and they weren't getting to us, which, which could happen. And we were able to remedy, remedy for, for eight hours of maintain.
Tom?
And that kind of goes along with my question. Do you know what the county standard is? I know the county raised theirs a few years back and I think it was looked at the Williamson County standard.
The last time I talked to the superintendent, and that was when Delvin was the superintendent, the base stone was the same as ours. Their change was in their final course. And we use an inch and a half final course, they use a two-inch final course. And their experiences have led them to believe, to know that that two-inch final course gives them a longer wearing surface than, so when you have as many road miles as the county does, it allows them to stretch their budgets further.
The only reason I ask that is I know that the subdivision regs for road construction at the county level was more stringent than the county standard for road construction. And I didn't know whether or not the city and the counties, you know, for subdivisions, we should all probably look at being somewhere close to the same just because of the sake of being internal within the same geographic.
Yes, about it.
The inch and a half versus the two inches the county uses, it does have some bearing weight capacity is increased, but typically that surface is not even applied until after most of the construction. And the base material, the foundation of the road is where most of the bearing strength actually comes from.
So the last subdivision that was done, that was Jonathan Knight subdivision, and I don't know, remember the name of it. We actually, they built to our standard except for the roadway profile where they built to the county standard. And I'd get with Tony, is it Troy, is it Troy Atkins? We can get with Troy and see what theirs is and.
Talk to the plant, talk to the planning office because there is a difference.
Okay.
And that was an area of contention because when the county got ready to do road work, they weren't bringing it up to the same standards as the subdivision regs were.
Okay, we can, we can look at that.
So that got to be a, you know, a butt-in-heads type thing. But I'm, I'm looking at it from a standpoint, if the city continues to grow and starts annexing into some of these areas to where it would be nice to know what that road surface was underneath.
Yes, sir.
Public construction place. Just, just a point.
I got a question. When you get down to the dirt, is the dirt compacted before you put the stone on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we do a group roll and make sure there's no problem.
And they run a compaction test?
We, our highway department, highway department, we use nuclear density gauges and quarry and laboratory tests. But we, we use a loaded carpet dump truck that's fully loaded with up to twenty-five ton rock and then we look for problem inside failure. And we drive and walk and all that.
And so if it doesn't pump, we call that compacted enough?
I remember when we used, when we built interstates, they compaction tested every so many feet.
Yes, sir.
And if it failed, you had to cut it.
Well, that's the difference between a thirty mile an hour road and a seventy mile an hour road.
Exactly.
All right, very good.
All right, any other questions? Is there a motion on this item?
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and we have a second. Dustin? We are ready to vote.
Briggs?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Bib?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Alan?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
All right, item three point two, discuss and possibly take action on a sixty-eight hundred square feet mini storage facility at forty-eight fifty-eight Highway forty-one North. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Motion?
You said sixty-eight hundred, I think it's sixty-eight thousand.
Sixty, you're right, sixty-eight thousand. That's why we're looking at it. Because it's over fifty thousand, right, Kimberly?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we have a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is a mini storage request. It's located at forty-eight fifty-eight Highway forty-one North. It's map parcel zero nine, six-nine parcel, sorry, map zero-six-nine parcel zero-nine-zero point zero-seven and point zero-eight. It's zoned commercial services and they are requesting to build four storage units, a total of forty-eight thousand nine hundred square feet. Now, the owner, John Warner, had a feasibility study done in two thousand and twenty-two and determined that there was a need for storage facilities here in Springfield. With that study, he discovered that there were five storage facilities within the city limits, but there's still a need for it. At that time, we went ahead and took it to the Board of Zoning Appeals. In August the ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, the conditional use was approved. So now it's back here because it is over the five, or fifty thousand square feet. According to the zoning ordinance eleven dash thirteen oh-three C four, anything over fifty thousand square feet needs to come to the planning commission. So the, the staff and the city departments have reviewed the site plan. Clover Engineering, as their engineer, has addressed all of the concerns. There is no hazard substance is permitted on this location. The owner is aware and understands that the building permits will not be issued until a plat combining the tracks six and seven is recorded. The redevelopment meets the city ordinance requirements and staff has no objections. Now, John Warner is here to answer any of your questions on the facility.
Okay. One question to Mr. Warner would need to come up to the microphone. Okay, Jim?
What are the buildings gonna be built out of?
They're gonna be brick, all the exterior will be brick and the doors.
Okay.
What type of lighting will you have for that facility?
There'll be lights mounted on the building and in the back, there will be streetlights that shine down out of the buildings.
All right, any other questions? You better ask him while he's up here. Okay, if not, is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Who got the second?
I did.
Okay.
Dustin?
All right, we're ready to vote.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bib?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
All right, item three point three is discuss and possibly take action on Jasper Field subdivision. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The property is located at Fifth Avenue East and Stevens Lane. It's map parcel zero-eight-zero F, group F, parcel two and parcel thirteen. The portion of the subject property was annexed and rezoned on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to R seven, high-density residential. The adjoining property was also, was already R seven. So they just combined the properties, remaining sixty-five acres. With that, Ryan Holmes is requesting to build a hundred and thirty-one single-family lots. And now this is just a preliminary plat, I do want to reiterate this. This is just a preliminary plat and it is subject to change. We're waiting on the construction plans and a final, so final approvals will be subject to the review of the final plat and construction plans. I have Josh Line here, who is the engineer, who's put this together. He's here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, and he is headed up to the microphone.
Good evening, Josh, Clover Engineering. Thank you for hearing us this evening. Yes, we're just presenting this as a preliminary plat for the homes and we've actually gone through one round of comments for the construction documents for the subdivision. We've addressed those and just recently resubmitted those plans. And this plat that we are presenting does line up with our latest construction plans. So we're pretty far along in this preliminary plat. We don't anticipate any more changes, honestly, unless there's any more comments that come through the construction plan review. But pretty much what we see in this preliminary plat is what's probably gonna be recorded when the final comes along later on after construction.
I had a couple of questions. You have a mail kiosk?
Yes.
On lot seventy-nine. Is that, is that mail for the entire subdivision?
That's for the entire subdivision. That's mandated by the post office that we have to provide kiosks, you know, centralized location. I can't remember which lot number it was on, but yes, it's just for this subdivision only.
Okay. And at the, where the cemetery is, I noticed there, it looked like there was a, an entrance?
Yes. There, there is a space left, left open along the roadway. They, that cemetery can be accessed. And it's actually sandwiched between a lot on each side, but we left that cemetery intact and, you know, it can easily, easier to get to now once the road is built. Right now, it's kind of in the middle of an open field.
When, when you pull off there, would they be able, like, a couple of cars be able to get off the road and park?
We don't have any formal parking places noted for that. They would just have to pull over on the side if anybody wanted to access that.
Would that grave area, would it be fenced in or anything like that?
The cemetery?
Yeah.
I could ask Drew from Ryan Holmes. I don't know what their intentions are to do with the cemetery. I know we had talked in the past about it.
Andrew Robertson with Ryan Holmes, the builder. We did not have any plans to fence that in, but I mean, if that's part of something that you guys would want to see, it's part of this development, and we would be open to that.
Rather than just leave it open when you think it'd be better to fence it in?
Again, we didn't have any plans to, but yeah. Just try not to disturb it. Pretty much leave it alone as is.
Okay.
You can tell where it is. I mean, it's full of trees right in there.
Right, yeah, right.
Is it Ryan Homes? Oh, is the builder correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So what type of material are you using for these homes?
They'd be block foundations, all hardy siding. And then vinyl trim, soft it, some shutters on the front depending on the elevation of the home that's selected.
So what's your, your actual starting range for these homes?
We haven't got to that point yet. You know, we, we haven't got the lots on the ground yet, so it's hard to kind of price those until we get all the information back on the development side.
So I just got a question on street connectivity. So is Stevenson Lane, the, the southern stub there, is that intended to be connected in the future? So like there's a, correct.
Yeah, and it's getting reworked. It's a substandard width and curved. So this is getting reworked as part of this development as the secondary entrance next to the church. And of course, the, the main entrance off the highway will have a. Turning lane, a left turn and a right D cell lane. And we've had several meetings with T dot about this and with Clayton, Public Works involved. Just about all last year, we went back and forth to work out that detail and T dot has no issue with this location.
So, so my question is, is the Stevenson Lane, like, stub intended to be connected? Like, would that be noted on the plat?
It's connecting to the existing Stevenson because that continues on beyond this drawing.
Correct, but if the property next to you develops, do we have the ability to require that connection in the future? So to the east?
I guess I'm not understanding what you're.
And this may be something staff has to address, but you're leaving a stub there to be connected at some point.
That's not a stub.
It's not a stub.
No.
It's just not in the city.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where we're re.
That's an existing road.
Okay.
To the city standards, yeah.
Okay, so then going back to all the cul-de-sacs, would it make sense to have one of them connecting to either Jason property?
Well, if, if we could physically, but it drops off, it's very steep. And that's why the entire parcel is not being developed, just because of topography. And this is up on, basically up on the plateau. And you have steep terrain around all three sides and then on the north, it goes down to the creek. So that's why we worked out the main entrance plus the Stevenson Road interest to get our two required entrances.
Yes, does the staff think that's okay?
Yes.
Is a hundred and thirty-one single-family homes will be built there, correct?
Yes, all detached.
What type of amenities are you gonna have right there in that area?
We were thinking, I mean, we might have some, some walking trails around the perimeter. We don't have any kind of planned amenities. There's not much open space around the lot right now. We have a big use of it there, so, I mean. Walking trails, like. And we've left sporadic gaps around the, the lots and the cul-de-sacs, so there will be public access between lots and some of the locations. Like, each of the cul-de-sacs, I believe, has a public access. So if they do a walking trail, there'll be an actual way to get to it around the perimeter.
But no, no outside or playground area, anything like that?
No, not anticipated at this point.
All right. Other questions? Bob?
I just got a question and I'll tell you why in a minute. Has this property been transferred to Ryan Homes? Does Ryan Homes own this property yet?
We have a raw land contract agreement with the seller that where our, so we don't develop lots. We have a developer that would develop all the lots for us. Once the construction documents are approved, that'd be the trigger for them to purchase the land from the current owner.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to abstain because the current owner is a family member, so.
Okay.
I will abstain.
So noted.
And Brian Homes built, they built out there at the Falls, correct? But these homes here that you're building on this particular area, will they be anywhere as standard as, is those in the Falls?
These are a little bit smaller as far as square footages and footprints, so they're not gonna be exactly similar to those. I mean, we are gonna have the hardy siding around the outside, but those houses in the Falls are a little bit bigger, a little bit more square footage there. So not exactly the same, but all have same garages, driveways, two garage front and garage, but not quite the size of the ones in the Falls.
Okay, other questions? Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Got a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. We are ready to vote.
Richard?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Passes with eight. Bib is staying.
All right, item three point four is a discussion to approve a test case study for alternative aggregate surface true grid paver system. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is gonna be a case study to evaluate whether the true grid paver can be a viable alternative to concrete and asphalt. The true grid paver is a permeable pavers made of recycled non-leach plastic and can be endured heavy loads of traffic, so heavy traffic. And it's a porous pavement materials can help reduce the stormwater runoff naturally. This is a cost-effective way for some of the developers to, to put down some pavers and, and not have to do the stormwater management on that, well, they may have to do a little bit, we'll find out. But this, the, the test location is gonna be at twenty-seven oh-seven Memorial Boulevard, which is at the corner of Memorial Boulevard and Black Patch. Five Star Construction is gonna be our expert, so we're going to refer to them on the progress for a year. So we're gonna give it a twelve-month trial to determine whether this true grid paver can be a viable alternative resource. So twelve months, so from March two thousand and twenty-five, we'll revisit, we'll, we'll check in with them periodically to see how things are going. And then March of two thousand and twenty-five, we'll, we'll do it that way. That way, we go through all seasons to see if it handles the cold, the heat, the et cetera. Now, our regulations, just to let you know, our regulations do not state one way or the other. It just says a dustless surface. So this is the reason why we're bringing this up because it's not really, there's not really an alternative right now. It just says dustless surface, so we're giving it a try. Now, I do have a sample of the product and I have Ms.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I give a little background on the situation?
Sure, go ahead, Brad.
Real quick, while Kimberly, if you can show them that sample.
This, this kind of came up at this particular location. Five Star had developed this site for a strip center. And, and you can see what she's passed around. This is the grid paver system and you can see the yellow ball that's in one of those, one of those holes there delineates, that's how you delineate a parking space. But this came up, Five Star constructed that facility there, that strip center there at the corner of Black Patch and Memorial. Initially, we were told and, and that it was gonna be general retail or general services, so the parking requirements were smaller. So there wasn't a lot of parking put at that site. Later on, they decided that they were going to lease that out to food service, which obviously requires a lot more parking. We considered, as a staff, we considered the building to be grandfathered in. So we did not require, we, we did not prohibit them from, from leasing that to food, you know, food service industry, right? But what happened is they needed additional parking. Initially, they had inquired on the lot that they actually own, which is adjacent, this lot that we're talking about now, about gravel. We don't allow gravel in the city limits of Springfield except for in the restrictive industrial zoning classification. It's the only time we allow gravel and that's a temporary basis. We have some gravel that's grandfathered in prior to us outlawing gravel, which is why you see it in some areas. But we don't allow any new gravel and haven't for twenty or so years or a long time. So at least twenty-seven years, twenty-three years, twenty-four years, sixty-two, what is it? So, but I did mention to, to Ms. Powell, where I said, hey, there's an option out there that we've talked with some folks about trying and it's a true grid paver system. We would be interested if, if you all are interested in going to the planning commission and asking for a case study to see if we want to allow this. Now, Kimberly said we would report back in a year. We're not gonna make them tear it out if we don't like it. But what we'll do is report back in, in, did you say a year? Is that right? In a year and say, hey, this worked out really well, or this was a disaster, they don't like it, we don't like it. Let's don't include this in our zoning ordinance, right? Right now, our zoning ordinance only says a dustless. Right now, our zoning ordinance only says a dustless surface, so it neither allows nor prohibits the true grid paver system, which is why we feel like it's an opportunity to do a case study before we actually make any changes to the ordinance. So that's what's before you tonight. Um, if you have any questions on what they're doing with the site, uh, there are a couple of representatives here that can answer your questions on that, but if you have any questions for us, we'll be glad to answer those as well.
Okay, of course, of course the representatives are right here. Okay.
David, didn't we-
Come on up to the microphone here.
Didn't we talk about something like this between BS Brew Works and the railroad at one time?
Now, the, uh, material that's, we saw the, one of the yellow dots, they, that would be just like for lines for parking?
Correct.
And the material in between is recycled material?
Like a polymer plastic that's supposed to be really durable? That's what they explained to me. I couldn't go into details to what it's actually made of, but.
What makes it dustless?
Well, I'm not real sure.
The rock, the rock material that goes in the aggregate has to be washed.
But it is a rock filler, not a powder?
Correct.
So the crushed rock will go in here. It becomes a porous material, so it runs through, so there's
always draining. You have a baseless stone and then you put that down and then put your-
A half-inch stone washed in this, yeah.
Yeah, and that locks together with all the others.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, uh, I, I've seen this in other places. I don't know that I've seen it anywhere in middle Tennessee, but, um, one of the things also is part of the case study, not only the materials, but just any feedback on people that use the lot and like their ability to be able to get in and out, both with their car or walking. Like some of the pervious surfaces are really bad on different types of shoes, or if people have canes, that type of thing in order to get in and out. I think that would also be good to look at as part of the case study. Any feedback there?
I guess that's why we're doing the study, to see how it works, yeah. That works for us.
We'll learn together.
There, Mr. Chairman, there are a few variations of this. One, actually, it grass, so that when you look at the true grid and, and all of the things it's been used for, they can, you can do it on grass. I think one of the concerns there is, is the softening of, you know, and the, and the slippage, so I think that's why aggregate has been proposed against a particular instance, but I, I agree, that's a lot of things that we're going to evaluate during this year period. Uh, we'll get to see all four seasons. We'll get to see how weather affects it. We'll get to see. I, I don't know that it's ever anything that will propose as primary parking, but it, it might be a good secondary or overflow parking. Uh, someone used the example earlier, we were talking, let's say, you know, Walmart's parking lot, only forty percent of it is used on a really busy day, right? Except for Black Friday, Christmas season. So I think when we see a big box, we might see an overflow opportunity, just like in this, an overflow parking opportunity as opposed to a primary parking opportunity.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so is there a motion to approve the study?
What, I want to ask you.
Okay.
When you said the, the yellow little bumpers there would be used, that's lines for parking?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
They parked right on the line on that.
That's right, yeah.
They would fail the case.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Greg?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Bib?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
All right, item three point five, uh, discussion to approve Panda Express National Prototype Exterior Building Materials. Is there a motion to put this on the floor for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
And we have a second. Okay, Kimberly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Panda Express is, um, a national retailer, uh, restaurant, and they have asked to use their new prototype. And their new prototype doesn't match our current, uh, zoning and subdivision regulations, so, but they are allowed to do that if they provide a letter, which they have. And, um, so the current subdivision regulation states that it needs to be brick, stone, or decorative rock in commercial. So the request is for a fiberon wildwood compost cladding containing ninety-four percent pre and post custom, customer recyclable content and is free of toxic chemicals. It's a long-lasting, durable product with a street view appeal. Staff has no concerns with this request. Um, Panda Express is doing their due diligence right now, so we don't have site plan submitted. But this is one of the things that they're asking to do if they can provide this as their new design clearance.
Uh, do they have a percentage of stonework that they put on the?
At right now, they have, uh, the stonework is down here and then they have this fiber, um, fiberon wildwood compost cladding material and that's up here. Um, and then that I believe is probably the Jameson Hardy board design. And you'll see at most of our restaurants and really use this new contemporary look, so that's what they're looking for.
We've, we've made adjustments before with other companies, uh, like Tracy Langsford, uh, you know, they're building pretty much all of the same, right? The Ford Company, their buildings are the same, you know, where you go, right?
Right, yeah, they're trying to keep their national brand, prototype, that's what this is.
So this is a, a new Panda Express from the ones that we see other places?
Yes, and they, um, gave me a location of dripping Texas is one of their, that's what they were using that as an example to start off with.
Yeah.
And they liked it, the design, so now they want to make this their permanent. I did receive a letter from Panda Express, uh, corporate, um, requesting for this.
Do they have location yet?
It has not been disclosed because they have not, about, they haven't submitted any site plans at this time, so.
They're evaluating a couple of locations and, and the zoning ordinance, and, and you're right, uh, the zoning ordinance allows for, um, national brands, you know, for the planning commission to make exceptions to our building material requirements for national brands, and that's what we've done to past four dealerships for national, um, you know, Walmart and things like that.
Right.
And we've talked about that before, like with car dealerships, they have a set thing they go with.
Right, um, yeah, according to the regulations on that, um, it just says such buildings and construction with other durable or decorative materials, if required, to be national or regional corporate owners or sponsors approved by the planning commission. That's the reason I'm bringing it to you.
May I introduce you?
Sure.
Uh, quickly, the, we put that in to keep people from building whole ones. And so the, the, the brick requirement, anything under fifty thousand square feet, you know, partial grid, front, partial grid, if it's over fifty thousand square feet, as you saw earlier than I, it's got to be brick and I don't know that there's an exception for, uh, a, a national standard because we wanted Walmart to be brick and they didn't do brick because we didn't have a brick requirement in our zoning ordinance, so we have that now. So if a big box comes, it's got to be brick. You know, so Ford, Panda Express, those are all things that are less than fifty thousand square feet and have an actual brand.
So I think, sorry, I think my, uh, only concern is just not knowing the location. I'm not saying we ha- maybe have to know that, but I think that does give some context to what's around. Um, I think that's my, like, biggest concern. Most likely, this is probably okay because it would be in a commercial district of some sort, but you know, kind of knowing what else is around there, I think should also guide some of that decision.
Sure, the, the locations they've been evalu- evaluating are, I mean, I think before they commit, they kind of want to know what kind of chicken it is, right?
Right, right, right.
You want to, you want to know where they're going, where you commit, they want to know if they can build it before they commit. Um, they've evaluated a couple of locations on Tom Austin Highway, uh, Memorial Boulevard, as well as the location behind Chick-fil-A on Watson Road. So those are the three primary areas that they've been evaluating. They're pretty hot and heavy, um, as far as wanting to be here, so they asked for us to bring this to you all to see while they're making their deal. Now, you don't have to do it. I mean, you don't have to and, and they can, if they want to be here, then they'll build what, you know, what we want them to build. I mean, there, there are a lot of cities that, you know, I think of Collierville, Tennessee is one that it's got to be a certain way. It's got to be Collierville's way. It's not, you know, Steak and Shake's way or Panda Express's way, so there are cities that don't do that. Um, our zoning ordinance provides for you all to make the exception for na- for national brands and that's up to you whether or not to do it.
What does staff want to see?
I think we're okay either way. I mean, we, we're, I don't think that at this particular time, and this is probably going to be somewhat of a bold statement, but I don't think that at this particular time, um, if, if you were to say no, if you said that is, and I'm not saying it is, I, I I'm not saying it's ugly, I'm just saying, if you were to say that's the ugliest thing that I've ever seen and I don't want that on, you know, such and such road, I don't think it's going to stop Panda Express from coming necessarily. Maybe it will, right? Maybe it will. Um, uh, but I, I don't, I think restaurants are going to want to be here. Our position is the reason we brought it to you, we don't oppose it. We've done that for others and Panda Express is, I mean, it's, it's unique to Panda Express. It's a national brand, so we have, we have no objection to uh, for that exception that he made and for Panda Express, always welcome new businesses and are excited to have new businesses, um, coming in and attending.
The ones that I've seen look good. I mean,
Yeah.
if you see one built.
I think there's going to have to be some exceptions made if we want Springfield to grow like what Hendersonville and some of these other places have.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
I think we got two seconds. We'll go with Buzzing.
Take, tell me, tell me, tell me, guys.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Thomas?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bib?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Passes with nine.
All right, under other and old business, uh, BCA meeting March the twelfth. Kimberly?
Um, yes, if you mind, since we're on this topic about materials, I'd like to segue into a study, a research. With new contemporary looks that are coming, um, we have looked at a couple of different items and I'd like to do a little bit more research if you would give me the permission to. What we're looking to do is to help some of the developers, um, come up with more creative exterior designs. So if you see that, um, this right here is a Centrian stone. It's a stone veneer look that looks like natural stone. I'm using this as a, um, Starbucks because this is the veneer stone that you're looking at. It is not the real brick. Um, and then also the Hardy board slabs, it's a Jamerson Hardy board that's over here. I'd like to do a little bit more research to see if this could be a viable option for, um, different companies, commercial companies coming in.
What do you think?
We're not approving anything tonight. All I would like to do is if you would give me permission to do a little bit more research and if I come back with, um, some solid information that we can make some changes on our subdivision regulations.
Should we give her permission?
I feel, yes.
Done, sir.
All in favor of giving Kimberly permission to, to check this out? Say aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I will do that.
You're good to go.
And then, and next time I come back, I will have some, uh, samples and some more information for you. This is just a, I wanted to throw it out to give you that visual. A couple of other things on here, um, the BCA, as you mentioned, we do have the BCA coming up next week. Uh, we have a couple of items on there. They're temporary use. They're looking for portable offices while they're under construction or renovation. Portable office for Carvers, which is off of Highway forty-one North. They're building, they're building, so they are looking to have a portable office off to the side. Um, while they're doing this, it does need planning commission approval for that. And also, um, urgent care, which is in front of Goodwill. They're wanting to put a temporary office up there to conduct business as well. So it just needs a temporary use approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those are that. And then we have a variance request as well, um, off of Fifth Avenue. And that's all for the BCA. I do have one other reminder. On April the sixteenth, we're doing a comprehensive study with, this is a joint study review. Um, it will be with the Board of Mayor Alderman, Planning Commission, and also invited the BCA. So it's, it's going to be at five o'clock, correct? Five o'clock. It'll be right in here. It'll be just for one hour. It's not required that you attend, but we want your feedback because this is the comprehensive plan for our future growth of Springfield. And that is all I have, sir.
Okay. Any other things we need to talk about tonight?
Just really quickly, so Kimberly, related to that, I know like street design, flexibility with street design might be something that would come up. Um, and I know we've got, it's like a twenty-six-foot wide street requirement based on what we're reviewed today. Are things like that going, going to be on the table most likely going forward to look at flexibility involving some of the street standards? Because it, it sets up, I, I think, maybe opportunities to get things aligned in different areas of town. Um.
Um, if you're referring to the twenty-six-foot wide roads, um, that believe has been, that was recently changed and that is for the fire department to re- to maneuver their trucks. So that's going to be our standard going forward, is twenty-six foot. Is that correct? Right?
You all can make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor, all of them change that in the zoning ordinance with that recommendation moving forward. We had a discrepancy between the fire code and the zoning ordinance. And the fire department was adamant about, especially with us being, having aerial apparatus now and, uh, this discussion's not unique to Springfield. I'm sure you know that. It's, like you talk to any other city. Uh, the fire department and the development folks are, are, it's a total war between, uh, and, and the police department kind of has, because the police department say narrower roads, slower, lower speeds, right? You know, you look at, the prime example in Springfield is where Tom Austin Highway has been widened just out of South Main and coming down that hill, the back's in parkway to that red log is a drag strip, right? Because it's a straight, it's wide, it's just a great way to just speed up with gas and coming down that hill, right? Um, so narrow roads, lower speeds, but wider roads allow for, uh, better first responder capabilities, right? The fire code minimum for aerial apparatus access road is twenty-six feet. And we squared that up after doing some research. Um, they even did actually great, great little research from other cities and found that some cities are wider, some cities are twenty-eight or thirty. Um, we stuck with twenty-six to be consistent with the fire code, but that's a discussion that we can have and you all can make a recommendation to the Board of Mayor Alderman to, to change that.
Uh, yeah. Sorry, I just imagined something like that might come up as we're talking about a comprehensive plan and thinking of like different kind of village-type standards, like that's really hard to kind of create that character and look with a really wide street, so. And I didn't know if there was flexibility beyond.
Well, I think in specific plans, I believe you're going to have flexibility there. So when we see that four hundred acre development, uh, which is not four hundred acres, it's five hundred now.
Five hundred fifty-six?
Um, five fifty-six?
Yes, sir.
It's grown since the last time we saw it, but, um, I think what we'll see there is in the specific plan, there's, there's an opportunity because you're right, you're on something, right? So, on the concepts that we've seen, that's going to narrow up and tighten up into their village center, part of that development. So there's that capability. I think we also have the capability in PUDS to do it in PUDS, but standard, uh, you asked tonight, you brought up, you know, amenities. You know, what about amenities? Well, that's a, that's a give and take, right, on, you know, okay, they said, well, we- You know, what about amenities? Well, that's a, that's a give and take, right, on, you know, okay, they said, well, we can put in a walking trail if you give us a twenty-six or twenty-four-foot wide road or twenty-two-foot wide road, right? They offer no amenities and I went over and and, you know, us, they talked about walking trails and things like that. As everybody else who's never done a walking trail also has gotten up and talked about walking trails and things like that, because they're gonna say everything's on the table, but we understand that money matters, right, and and things matter, costs matter, and at the end of the day. So that's why they have twenty-six-foot wide road requirement. But PUDs have that flexibility, because if they're gonna do a walking trail, then maybe we can be flexible on that, um, because eating into some of that space with a wider walkway and that's where.
I I appreciate the the background on that.
All right, anything else?
Don't we dedicate the skate park, uh, Friday?
The plan is to dedicate the skate park tomorrow at four o'clock, so come out for that. Stay uh tuned to our social media though, because we, if it rains, we're not gonna be out there to rain, so we can't.
Can't skate in the rain.
Part of making decisions around, I love that tomorrow about whether uh, whether or not we're gonna do the thing. You may, if the weather's good, we'll still have it come up for a while.
Bring me skates.
Bring my skates. No, no, thanks.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I see a nod, a little adjourn.